My group is called M3. We're a think tank group. We are here in support of what's going on here.
Are you based out of Allentown?
Yes, we're based out of Allentown, but we're dealing with the entirely Lehigh Valley area, which some people don't know is between Easton and down to Reading. Sounds of Reading. Isn't that very interesting? When I say Reading, this is what happens. It's my hometown.
Okay. So what is going on here tonight?
Today, we're here just to show unity, show, uh... I guess the forces that we are coming together with care and concern. We're gonna do a little bit of training, getting ready for Monday's walkout. Uh, the students are asking for better education, more multicultural education, uh, summertime jobs. They're looking for information on how to fill out college applications, fill out job applications, something that they're gonna learn in school that's actually gonna assist and benefit them, whether it's in higher education or in the workforce later on.
So why the walkout?
Well, the walkout is because it's a peaceful demonstration. We've seen things in the 60s and the 50s where, uh, all they did was stop buying something, or they boycotted this, or they just walked down the street in form of unity. So at this point, the youth said, "We wanna do something that's not a problem and causing a problem to society, but still, we're gonna voice our opinion and let them know that we care about our education. We care about what's happening to us." And in doing so, they came up with, "Well, can we do a peaceful walkout?"
Who are they not? Happy or are they not satisfied?
Oh, they're definitely not satisfied.
How can you give us some examples of why?
Um, the dropout rate is enormous. Uh, they're not interested in what is being taught, not because of the teachers. They understand the teachers have their hands tied. They're speaking more to the management and to the people who are controlling it. They actually, uh, want to befriend the teachers and want the teachers who are passionate to stay there and show them what to do, but they don't have enough passionate teachers altogether, because they're not getting paid enough to do that. And the money is not being spent right. It's coming into the school district and they know it, but it's going out to places that it shouldn't go. So they're asking for a reevaluation of the finances coming into the school. They're also asking for, uh, more of a control in what happens to them. And, and I've heard people say that, "Well, they're too young to make decisions on their own." However, how do you train and teach them how to be part of society in this democracy without giving them the tools and giving them the experience and exercises prior to? So because of that, they said, "Well, we'll do a peaceful walkout. Can you help us organize it and find support for it?" Uh, United Youth, Dr. Frasette, uh, and the entire United Youth program, said, "We'll help organize it as long as you do the work." And that's what I've been seeing right now, the youth. This is a youth movement. This is not about the adults, it's not even about the parents. Even though the parents, the majority of the parents that I've seen and I've talked to are in support of this. This is about the youth saying, "We wanna do what we wanna do for ourselves so we can have better education." Right now, they don't feel like they're getting it. And if you look across the entire Lehigh Valley area, for the majority of it, the education system is lacking. I'm from Reading, Pennsylvania, and in Reading, Pennsylvania, it's worse than it is here. So here in Allentown, we, we know that when we do this and it goes off right, because the children are looking to do this organized, looking to be orderly. Uh, this is not a bunch of hoodlums. This is people who sat down and thought about what they wanted to do and said, "The best thing that we could do is follow the keys of Martin Luther King and those protests and just walk out." And when they do it, they're gonna be walking down here to the Martin Luther King statue to keep in mind while they're doing what they're doing in a peaceful way.
Oh, I thank you. Thank you very much.
M3, United Youth. Oh, oh my goodness, I did forget something that's happened. Can I, can I mention that real quick? In support of this, M3 is bringing Dr. Umar Johnson, a credited psychologist, child psychologist, who was in the schools. Uh, he'll be coming down to 1132 Hamilton Street at the Epicenter, 3rd floor, 301. He'll be there from 12 o'clock to, uh, 4 o'clock on Sunday. And he'll also be, that's the 27th of this month, and he'll also be in Cushtown University, uh, from 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock same day. But he's coming down in support of him. Now, he's not part of the movement, but when he found out what was going on, he said, "Well, I will come in and have a discussion about what I know about the education system and how maybe it's affecting the children or maybe disenfranchising the children's education." So Dr. Umar Johnson will come down to speak at the Epicenter, 12 o'clock to 4 o'clock, uh, September 27th, and at the Epicenter, 1132 Hamilton Street, and then he'll be in Cushtown University.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, bro.
Whatever.
If you could first just tell us your name and spell it.
My name is Mike Frasette, F-R-A-S-S-E-T-T-O.
Okay, and, uh, are you with the group, an organization?
Yeah, yeah, we started the group, United Youth, five years ago at the Roberto Clemente Charter School. We are not affiliated with them anymore. We're our own separate entity, entity. Um, and we, we grew up to be the, the largest student-led group in the city, uh, by far.
Are you currently a student?
Me?
Mm-hmm.
I, I get that a lot. Uh, uh, no, I'm not a student. Um, I'm, I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for the last six years in the Allentown School District.
Oh, okay. Where do you teach?
Uh, now I teach under, uh, uh, at the Medical Academy Charter School, which is in Kalamazoo. But most of the kids are from Allentown. About 85% of the kids are from Allentown School District.
So tell me, um, what's going on here tonight?
Okay, I mean, you know what? It's, it's been long enough. I mean, we have a complete disconnect in our city between the systems of the city and the people of the city. And all we want is for the people of the city to be heard. They've been, they've been negatively portrayed in the media for so long, and now all they want is a common goal that we all should want, is a better education. That's all we want, is a better education, and we wanna be heard about that. And we haven't been heard for the last five years. So now, what we're doing is exercising our First Amendment right to peacefully assemble. That's all we're doing. This is a totally peaceful movement, uh, so we can be heard, so action can be taken, so we don't live in such a failing school district. Because wherever there's a failing school district, there's a failing community. And that's what we see here in this city.
What change do you wanna see in the district?
What changes do we wanna see? I mean, we do have, I mean, our demands that we have, they are specific on the flyers and all the media that we put out, but we are open to compliments. But number one, for the last three years, Russ Mayo has to go. He, he, he's not, he's, he's not a leader that, that had made any progress in the school district for the last three years. He has two more years on his contract, but he's gotta go. Um, if we wait two more years until his contract is up, I mean, you're actually killing kids. Kids are dying here in the city because of the school district failing. We need change now. We've been asking for change for the last three to five years, and it's not happening. So now we gotta be exercising our First Amendment right to peacefully assemble. Number two, and these are all what the students came up with. Number two is a summer student employment program for $15 an hour, and it's an incentive for kids to stay in school, get good grades, and behave. So if they do that, then they could get hired for $15 an hour during the summer months, okay? Uh, for $1.28 million, which is 0.4% of the entire annual budget. And number three is having, to have a student voice, uh, on the school board, not like what they have now, where they get a little, uh, 10th or 11th grader, and they say, "What's wrong with the school?" They say a few things, and then they clap for them and say, "Go home now, let's talk about the real stuff." We want the students and parents to have a voice on voting, so then whoever they vote on is actually a member on the school board, and they have voting power, just like all the other boards.
Are you going into the school board meeting tonight?
Yeah, we're gonna go in. We're gonna go into the school board meeting. Uh, we're not asking for any special treatment. We didn't ask to be on the agenda. Really, whatever they do, I mean, it's up to them. They haven't listened to us for five years, so we're not expecting them to listen to us tonight either. So all we're gonna do is be exercising our First Amendment right to peacefully assemble. We're gonna go in there for public opinion for three minutes. Uh, we're gonna organize the students. Any student who were in this is gonna be an officer for the walkout, and, uh, that's what we're doing.
So is the walkout happening no matter what?
Well, yeah, the walkout's happening no matter what, because we tried to be in negotiations with Russ Mayo, the superintendent. We tried to be in negotiations with the school board, and none of them wanted to talk to us. Actually, there was one that wanted to talk to us. We met with, I personally met with Russ Mayo one time, and after that, it was a great conversation. And after that, he canceled on the meeting. This Tuesday, he canceled on the meeting. All we wanted, and he knew about what's going on. All we wanted to do was meet with Russ Mayo, and he canceled on us. So now you have kids, you have students wanting and desiring their education to be improved, and the superintendent cancels on a meeting? He's gotta go. He doesn't care about anybody. He's gotta go.
What are the specifics of the walkout, uh, date, time, locations?
Well...
It's both of the high schools, correct?
It's both of the high schools. Now, we got a lot of stuff from middle school students. We got a lot from Vista, from Lincoln Leadership, from Roberto Clemente, but we are concentrating on Allen and Dierf, um, and what it is on September 28th, Monday. They're walking out of the schools. Dierf is meeting up on, uh, Irving and Hanover. Allen is meeting up on 17th and Hamilton. We're gonna have about 100, uh, adults outside of each, um, school. We're gonna march down all the way to the Martin Luther King statue, where we're gonna have education outside. So it's not about that these kids are just skipping school for anything. These kids are going down to the Martin Luther King statue, where local professors from Lehigh, from Cushtown, from, from Muhlenberg are coming down here to teach these kids about their rights, about their First Amendment rights, about, about the importance of being involved in your community. So we're having real education outside. They can't educate our kids, so we're gonna educate them the right way.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
A meeting going on right now. Every citizen of the United States has the right to walk in that door and go in that meeting. I second that. You guys wanna make a real statement to the news and everybody? Walk in City Hall right now. Everybody together, walk in with your signs. It is perfectly legal, it is perfectly okay. Every citizen of this town should walk in there and tell the people that rule this town that you're sick of what's happening here. I plan on walking over there in just a minute. One after another, go in there and say, "Enough's enough." We're, we wanna, we want this town to end the corruption.
So what brings you out to this site today, though?
Mainly, that's what's going on right now. In City Hall meeting, we're having pay-to-play meeting right now, at this moment, where like corruption...
Is it still...
It's about, just go and listen. You don't have to say anything, just go and listen.
Well, I think if we walked in there with all their, with all their signs, that would make a huge statement, and the news is in there.
Well, then take off the signs and just go in then.
No, no, with the signs, because the news is in there and the signs are...
You can't go in with the signs.
Yeah, you can, I've been in there 20 times with signs.
Yeah, they don't care about signs.
They don't care about signs?
Don't look at me, I'm just saying.
But signs are perfectly legal to write a protest. Which, which one?
I think you should get some people to go in there right now.
What's up, man?
It's gonna happen.
I'm Severn.
Ah, yes, Severn, nice to meet you, man.
You're Mike, right?
Yes, I am.
How's it going, man?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Yo, I think it would be good to watch these guys with the signs to walk into City Council and just stand there for a few minutes, because the news is in there live right now.
We're still, we're still at City Council, man. They're all in there?
They're all inside, right now, having a meeting.
It'd be a good idea, bro.
Yep.
Well, they know we're here, and we're here specifically to make sure they don't mess with the students. Yeah. This is a beautiful thing, when the community comes together like this and says, "Enough's enough."
Exactly. Crazy, Mike.
You have any chance?
You tell, you tell them to stop, man.
Just gonna go back and matter.
Ooh, wait, wait, wait. I'm not cute, this ain't up, this is not my...
I got your side, ma, you're good.
She matters, huh? She matters, she...
Yeah, we need more, bro. Make sure.
We need everybody.
They're not gonna...
We all, we all walk together.
Yeah, let them.
Thank you for protecting the kids. Thank you for caring. Jackie Colletta, for supporting Paul. Thank you for being here.
Ready?
Yo, use your cameras, use your cameras, yo, get your cameras out. Get your cameras out.
Make sure I'll turn on fire, bye.
Do you want to move the corner? Get your cameras out. Get your cameras out.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rashford. This is the outdoors. Look, timeout. Come on, please. Please close the door. Come on in, have a seat. Please close the door. Michael, can you, you know, just kind of get them all in and close the door? That would, that would help us.
Yo, you guys care about us.
Hold, 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 hold it, Michael.
Yeah, what's up?
Come on, come on.
Hey, man.
Look, we are, we are having, look, we are having, we're having a meeting, Rules, Chambers, and Government Relations and Strategy. We're talking about an anti-play-to-pay bill.
We'll wait for, we'll wait for our time.
Yeah, no, you, you, yeah, you, you, yeah, but you, you have to discuss the bill. That's our agenda for the night. We respect what you're doing, we respect what you're trying to, to accomplish, but the discussion has to be on the bill.
Okay, and then after that?
After that, we adjourn.
Oh, you guys are gonna leave? And when kids come here, because they really feel some type of way of how you feel about them, you're gonna leave when kids come here? Is that, is that what this is about?
This is not a formal City Council meeting, it's a committee meeting.
I don't care what kind of meeting it is. You got a meeting of kids coming here, wanting to talk to you, and you wanna leave on them. That's what it comes down to.
I, I think, Mr., I, I think we can, we can listen to you at the courtesy for a second.
Thank you, Julio.
But, but you must respect the meeting, and you must sit down if you can, and, and just wait until we finish our meeting.
There's not enough seats for us, we roll too deep.
I can stay a little longer and listen to you, but you can disrupt our meeting, please. Okay, so please, sit down, relax, and finish our meeting. I would like to stay a little bit and listen to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, sir.
You have a group called Upside Allentown that is supposed to be run by a nonprofit organization, and it turns out that it's not. It turns out that actually Stratton City Center and a couple other of the downtown corporations are paying a PR firm to run good publicity, making it look like it's Allentown nonprofits. Um, I've personally spoke to Alan Jennings, I believe his name was, from the Citizens Committee, who denies any involvement in this. However, his own Facebook page is not being run by him or his organization. It's being run by Digital, um, Digital Feast, a media, a media spinning corporation. What they're doing right now is trying to put on the face for the rest of the world that Allentown is under great support. They do not allow, uh, comments from anyone that's outside of their organization on their page. They do, they delete anyone and block anyone who makes a comment on the page with concerns. This is a great concern to people who are looking at this from the inside out, that we're not even given a voice to speak, because a PR firm is running these nonprofit organizations, and it's all being paid for by large corporations in our city. I think this goes directly with pay-to-play. These companies paid nonprofit organizations to hire a PR firm. I'm working on getting the paperwork to prove all of that, but no one has denied it at all. In fact, Alan Jennings said, "What is wrong with, uh, hiring a PR firm?" He said he was personally going to look into people not being allowed to comment. This was almost three weeks ago, but I've uncovered this, and he has not contacted me again. So all I can do is bring this to council's attention, that this is happening right now. This is a large thing happening. This company is working hand-to-hand with the police department, hand-to-hand with the city, and hand-to-hand with the mayor. And they're all being paid by the same large, large corporations on behalf of, uh, large corporations representing themselves as nonprofits in this city. It's all not true. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rashford, appreciate that. Anyone else showing the anti-pay-to-play bill? Bill 58? Seeing none? No, you get, you get one shot. I'm sorry. Uh, seeing none. Committee members, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that would favorably to an entire City Council for fighting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moda. Committee members, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. We will move this to the entire council on October 7th with a 3 to 0. And being that the entire council is here tonight, I think we should be okay, uh, with October 7th.
Uh, I know, I appreciate you guys taking the time, um, to, to, to talk to these kids and talk to me. Um, if anybody else wants to come up, uh, they are allowing three other people to come out if you wanna say something. Um, but I mean, just like you guys weren't here for this reason, we weren't here for this reason at first either. We were supposed to go over to the school board meeting, which we're gonna go over in about five, 10 minutes. But, um, look, there's, there's an issue. There's an issue in this city, okay? There's a disconnect in this city, and there's been a disconnect for 30 years, okay? This community, I was born and raised here, my dad was born and raised here. My dad's dad was born and raised here. They grew up on Jordan Street in the 1880s, okay? So we know when Allentown was once the greatest city in this country, that there was a time like that. And now, for the last 30 years, it has been divided. You're talking about divided from the African-American community, the Hispanic community, and the white community. Never been able to work together in the last 30 years, even fight within each other. And here we go, we have one common goal. The one common goal of students coming together, saying, "We demand a better education." The mismanagement of money, $20 million missing, 16 rape charges in the last four years, and nothing is done about it. You guys are our elected officials. We need you to act. We've been trying to change the school district for the last three to five years, and nobody did anything. What else do we have to do? And people say, "You, you, you might be doing it the wrong way." You guys are doing it the wrong way, because you guys shouldn't be getting students to do this first. You should be getting the adults first. Well, the adults didn't act. So now the students are standing up by themselves, together. They're standing up together and saying, "We demand a better education. We want a better future. We want a better life." 40% of the kids dropping out, only 7% get a bachelor's degree. 400% higher dropout rate amongst Hispanics and blacks than of white students. There are disconnects, inequalities in this city that have to be fixed. We sent out emails to every single one of you. And I know you guys don't check your emails all the time, but I believe you saw our emails in the last two, three weeks, and not one of you, not one of you responded. These are kids begging, kids, our kids are begging, the ones you are supposed to protect, are begging for you to give them an answer, and you don't even answer them. The school board does nothing to improve their education, to improve their life. Nothing! Look, all we're asking for is you guys to look at these kids and feel something, because they feel something. They feel that no one cares about them, and all we want you to do is care. And not just care by saying something and clapping for them and saying a good job and giving them a thank you card. We're talking about real action. That's what we want you guys to do. You have a school system in this city that is corrupt, and it kills our kids. Literally kills our kids, and we want you to act on that. Can everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Yes!
I think they gotta hear you louder. Can everybody agree on that?
Yes!
Thank you very much.
You guys ready? Listen to this, everybody follow. We have nothing to lose.
We have nothing to lose.
But our chains.
But our chains.
We walk together.
We walk together.
As brothers and sisters.
As brothers and sisters.
One more time. One more time. That sounded good, that sounded good. We have nothing to lose.
We have nothing to lose.
But our chains.
But our chains.
We walk together.
We walk together.
As brothers and sisters.
As brothers and sisters.
Now, let's go over to the Allentown School District Board Meeting.
Wait, 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 you wanted to say something to us?
Oh, wait, 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 you wanna say something?
But first of all, I, I'd like, I'd like to personally thank you. I think all, on behalf of Mike, I think they all feel that you are very active, proof, obviously. Um, I wanna thank you for coming over and for caring about education, for caring about your future, and caring about the future of this city. Um, I, I'd like to see, you know, because I think all of us have, um, have children here, youth and, and, uh, students from the Allentown School District, uh, from Central Catholic, and Harkonnen spoken to us, and, uh, we have actually given certificates for that. But saying that, I just want you to know that, for those who, I know Michael knows, but the rest of you who may not know, is that there are two forms of government here, okay? One is the City Council, City, the government in the City, and the other one is the government in the school. Two different types of representatives. They have their budgets, we have our budget, okay? We cannot mandate anything to them that they can do. We can support issues just like you do, but we can't make any laws here that will directly affect the government of the City, of the, uh, of the school district, okay? Um, but, and, and, and we have two former, um, school board members here, Ms. Sacken-Wall and Mr. Glaser, and they can, they, they can speak about it a lot better than I can. But I just want you to know that we're not ignoring what you do individually, we can do things, but as a government, we cannot really, uh, and I have... And I have personally gone over to the Allentown School District Board meetings and made comments about some of the issues that I see that are affecting our children. For example, we formed a committee one time, that was, I think you and I were both part of it, and it was to deal with issues that were affecting the students in Allen High School, Deer High School primarily, and the whole school district entirely. One of the things that came out of it was the uniform, okay? We suggested that the students wore uniforms. There were another thing that came out, and I made this suggestion myself, I remember, was that we separate the students that are disrupting the classrooms at the high school and form a alternative school. That happened, okay, eventually, that happened. And we have an alternative school for students. Because I know that my Jerry, all the students, in fact, I asked the principal Keith Falco at that time, and the principal of Deer, so at that time, Mr. Moniz, and I asked him, "How many students do you have in your schools that are disrupting the classrooms and that you really would not like to see?" And there were less than 500 students in both high schools. And that's why we decided, I mean, the school decided, actually, that they will open a alternative school, that's not only the reason, but that's one of the reasons. They will open an alternative school to house those students that were actually disrupted. So, saying that, I just want you to know, some of my colleagues may want to speak, but it's like, that I do appreciate you coming, I appreciate that you're respectful, that you're listening, and that you, that I can feel happy that you will have a future to carry on what some of us have done. And that we're going to, I personally, I can speak about myself, I personally would be encouraging those who want to do something positive for yourselves and for our schools.
So, why don't you all make a pledge to support this cause?
I'd like to know more about all the websites.
Well, then you have the founder right here, I think you can always speak to him.
I would be...
You're thanking everyone for making the steps, all right, necessary to fight for the cause, but then again, other youths are saying that we'll support you 100%.
Personally, since you asked me that question, I'd like to know a little bit more. I went on your website yesterday, and I saw some of the things that you do, and I've been dealing with Michael for quite some time. I actually contributed to your group, even financially. But, that's not the case here. The case is, I do agree with some of the things you're doing. I do agree that, you know, you've been helping our community.
Any other...
Let me just finish, let me just finish. I do see, went to your website yesterday, I saw that you had done activities on Liberty Street, on, I think it was Allen Street, Sixth Street, Sixth Street and two, you've done activities in other places, and I do support those activities. I don't support disruptions, quite frankly, and I do support people who care about themselves and about the school district.
Do you support the walkouts?
It depends, it depends. I don't want to go there because I really don't know much about why you did it or how you did it, so I don't want to...
Do you support kids exercising their First Amendment right to peacefully assemble? Can you answer that?
I do, within the right setting.
This can go back and forth in respect, but I, Ms. Saigon, if you want to make a comment, I want to make a comment. Okay, what I would like to do as President of City Council, I would like to sit up with your leadership. Who's your leadership, Michael?
Oh, we got a good leadership, we can do that anytime.
I'm not, I'm not saying good, bad, or different. Who is your leadership? I would like to sit up and meet up with Michael. I want to ask these people in the audience, and I respect what you're doing, okay? Number one, and I'm not blowing smoke, how many people in this audience know me? How many people in this audience know me? You know me, right? I've worked for the Allentown School District 38 years. Thirty-eight years I worked for the Allentown School District. I love this school district. I could cry some days what's happened to this school district, okay? I'm not looking for simple theoretical thing. What I'm saying, hey, my turn, what I say is...
Why aren't you doing anything about it?
Listen, timeout, timeout. We're not debating. I'm making a statement, whether you like it or not, I'm making a statement. I've worked for 38 years in this school district, okay? I do agree with many of your points, totally, totally. I would like to set up a meeting myself and President of City Council. Any other council members can join me. Mr. Hanley, reach out to Michael tomorrow. We'll set up a meeting, and we'll discuss point by point what your issues are. Thank you very much, and believe me, believe me, I will be there. Ms. Saigon War.
I'd just like to add my voice. Rather than viewing this a gathering of despair, all right, for me, in some ways, it's even a gathering of hope. Because once you take your future into your own hands, is the first step to make a difference. And I personally, I'm speaking just for myself, as a former school board member, the parent of three graduates of Allen High School, what I challenge you, Michael, what I challenge you, is understanding what our role is in the running of the city. To come up with ideas with which you would need our help, in ways in which members of City Council can benefit the struggle that we are all engaged in. So, you need to tell us what it is. I see around the room, more arts, more music, listen, youth matters, all right? We have different roles leading to the same goal, the betterment of your lives, which will lead to the betterment of our lives. But you need to be more specific, Michael, as you go forward in your leadership of this group, in telling us what it is, what it is that we have control over and that we can do.
Thank you very much.
So, go forward with your activism, all right? Make a difference in your lives, all right? We're here to surround you, all right? And be specific with ways in which we can help.
I would like to say just, just a word or two. I see a lot of my students here, you know? I miss you guys deeply, okay? I don't forget about any of you guys. I just want you to just be safe, you know? Be safe, education, we all know that is the key for success. But first of all, be safe in everything that you do.
Thank you for telling the kids to be safe. That's our number one concern, is that these students are safe. So, you as City Council, please, put pressure on the Allentown Police to not arrest these students when they exercise their First Amendment right on Monday. Put pressure on them to do that, because you do have the power to do that. The power that you have is the media. How many times did you have this many cameras in front of you when students sat in like this? Nobody listens to the morning call anymore. Nobody listens to 69 News anymore. The ones that they do listen to, the ones who run the media, are the kids. Facebook, Instagram, Kick, Snap Cap. The kids run the media in this city. If you want to connect with them, you got to get with them. You got to listen to them, you got to talk to them. And here it goes, if you want to talk about safety, then get on media and demand that the Allentown Police, Police and Chief Fitzgerald, demand that he protect the kids on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday and Friday when they walk out and exercise their First Amendment right.
Can we really think about it?
They really did care. They really did care. They would get...
They don't...
She said crack the fuck up.
This karma sucks.
They really did care. They would get...
Thank you, sweetheart. Okay, honey, thank you.
No problem.
Good time. But now we guys are right outside.
You guys are great, you guys are good.
Man, I wish I had a picture like that when I was graduating.
Power to the people!
Ask the teachers to support you!
Come from the heart. Come from the heart.
All right, but I'll be there Monday.
Nice speech, mom. Nice speech, mom. All right, Mike. You feel better? You feel good about that?
Yeah.
Oh, they have our votes, they get a shout out for the riot?
Yo, man, we on the truth, man, this is such a great cause.
Yes, sir.
I just want to let everybody know, man, I support everybody that's doing this. I graduated, but if I could change something, it would definitely have been the school district and the education of it, man.
Right.
Oh, man, I can't even tell you, man, but shout out to everybody who's here, shout out to everybody who made it.
Right.
It's a great cause.
Yes, sir.
And I'm happy to be here right now, for real, man. Shout out to my man Nate.
All right, Nate, what up, Nate? Respect, mom, respect.
Y'all had it go?
This right there?
Yeah.
Can I get a picture, mom?
Yeah.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Oh, shit's going down. You know what I mean?
What can bring you guys out today? I asked to interview one of you guys, for the kids, it's for the kids' afternoon. It's for the kids. Can I talk to him about it? You don't have to, I'm just... No, I don't want to put you guys in there. They'll start, start, right? Yeah, man, your teacher there?
No, wait, 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 teacher, teacher, teachers, I'm letting you know. Yo, guys, guys, guys. We understand your fight with these negotiations. These kids hear everything, believe me. We understand that Deb Tretter is your union president, Greg Potter is involved too. We hit them up and say, "We, the students, want to help the teachers." Can you tell Deb, can you tell Greg Potter to join fronts here? Students and teachers, for the first time in 30 years, work together to improve the schools. We march together here.
Go push that kid on to your side!
Sports, arts, and music?
This is a shame. When we go into school, we can't even enjoy our time one period.
That's true.
Can't have a good 45 minutes of art. Can't have a good 45 minutes of music.
Right.
What are they doing, man? What are they really doing, man? Uh, I've lost the words, I'll be on it.
Pipe line to jail, my brother.
I've lost the words, man. If a kid can't have fun in school, why y'all making them go? You know what I mean? A kid want to go to school, enjoy their time. You blocking everything out.
Uh-huh.
They ain't gonna go! I'm putting this in my pocket, I need it. I need it.
Walk down the alleys and talk to people, not just on the business streets.
Maybe, I mean, just a suggestion, I don't know how much you forget about the brutality incident, but did you hear about the kids that were arrested? The kid, the one kid from riding, I thought...
Oh, for riding the bike?
Riding, walking.
Yeah. I talked about that last night. Jay Kwan Robinson. Jay Kwan, right, exactly.
I've been trying to reach him, I haven't been able to reach him, but...
That's one of the kids.
One of the kids, that's one of the...
He lives right down there in Acres, I'm in Little Lehigh.
So, you want to try to get some of these kids out tomorrow night? I told you what's happening tomorrow, right? We got 15 different cop blockers from the East Coast meeting here outside City Council, and we're going to protest outside the police station for the brutality. You want to get some of these kids here, and obviously, these kids have a voice, they're adults, they come tomorrow at 7 o'clock PM.
You going to ask me questions?
Yeah. All right, what's your name, man?
My name's Mike Frisetteau. I've been, I was born and raised in Allentown, Pennsylvania, been a teacher and educator in Allentown School District for the last six years.
All right, so what's happening here today?
What's happening here today is that there's kids finally leading the charge against the disconnect in the community. There has been such a divide in this community for the last 30 years that we couldn't even work together for common causes, just like today, which is kids trying to improve their education. If we can't get behind and together on that common goal, then something's wrong with us. So now the ones leading this charge is the students. And now the students are asking for the adults of the community to march with them on September 28th, 7:00 AM, in front of Allen and Deer of High School, and march with them down to the Martin Luther King statue.
How much, this is obviously bigger than the schools, this is going, like, this is a citywide pattern that's happening in this town. I've personally been reporting on this. Well, what is your take on now it has gone as far as, people have said in the past that the students, or the kids are not being affected, that this is something that's a couple criminals, a couple this and that, that is making a big picture, that's making the whole city look bad from the corruption angle. What is your take on that?
Well, you talking about the corruption in the city for the city officials?
The city officials, the politicians, the budgeting, the pay to play, the school budgets, everything.
That all goes with the disconnect that I was talking about in this city. You have the rich people, the decision makers in this city, that do not care about the people of this city. That's obvious. When there's $20 million missing, when there's this pay to play in this city, only their friends get to build in the city, I mean, like, I mean, here it is, the second fastest economically growing city in America for the last two years, and you have one of the worst cities with poverty rate. 78% of our citizens still live in poverty. And yet you just invested $5 billion downtown in three blocks, but yet you go a block away and you see the worst poverty there is in America. There's something wrong with that.
Well, you obviously have a loud voice here, and City Council jaws hit the ground. I want to personally say, every one of you kids, I got so much respect for you, like, I'm choked up right now thinking about how powerful you guys came here with. You guys care, and that's what they forget, is that students give a damn, and students have a voice. And all you, if you want to yell out right now, this is going live tonight across the country. I promise, I promise that. It's going up on coplock.org, a national site, we have 1.5 million people following it. That's going up tonight. What do you want to say? Anybody want to yell anything?
We have rights too! They don't care! But we do!
"We have nothing to lose..."
We have nothing to lose!
"...but our chains..."
But our chains!
"...we walk together..."
We walk together!
"...as brothers and sisters..."
As brothers and sisters! As brothers and sisters.
One more time, we have nothing to lose.
We have nothing to lose.
But our chains.
But our chains.
We walk together.
We walk together.
As brothers and sisters.
As brothers and sisters.
We want some food. Come see where it's gonna be applied at.
Is that going up at CopLock, Lehigh Valley, or the actual?
It's gonna, it's gonna be on Lehigh Valley first, and it'll be by six A.M. tomorrow. I'm gonna push it to go, to go CopLock.
Guys, if you guys want some food, or if you don't.
I know.
Come in over here and sign in, please. Sign in at the laptops over here. Please do that if you did not. Please sign in at the laptop.
What matters?
We have not registered. We have Dr. Umar Johnson coming September twenty-seventh. That's the Sunday before the walkout. Dr. Umar Johnson to eleven thirty-two Hamilton Street, three oh one. Eleven thirty-two Hamilton Street, Dr. Umar Johnson coming to speak to you. It is a free event. We will ask for donations, though. We will ask for donations.
Just to sign in?
No, he's getting your hands.
Just getting your hands, ma. I won't do that to you.
He's getting your hands.
Your friend got your back.
They forgot the number. I don't know who this is.
So we're not, uh?
Make a problem?
My name is Faith Febreres, F.A.I.T.H.F.E.B.R.E.S.
And, uh, where do you go to school?
I go to school at William Allen High School.
Okay, why are you out here tonight?
I'm out here because, obviously, the, the Allentown School District don't care. If they did care, then they would be giving us new textbooks that's from this year, not from two thousand and seven or two thousand and six. We all want an education. We just don't wanna have a bumpy future like half of our family members.
And what, uh, what do you want to change the most? What changes do you want to see the most?
I wanna make, like, the changes I wanna make is that, like, the teachers got better books for us, like textbooks and stuff, so we can all learn from updated work and everything.
And how about you? Can you tell me what your name is?
My name is Felicity Febreres, F.E.L.I.C.I.T.Y.F.E.B.R.E.S. And I go to William Allen High School, as long as my school.
So why are you out here tonight?
I would like to see things change. For the school district, and not just for me, without being selfish.
What do you wanna see changed specifically? What don't, what are you happy about at school right now?
Well, aren't I happy about school? There's pretty much nothing. I'm not unhappy about it. That, I don't want a bumpy education for myself when I get older, 'cause everything that they're gonna be talking about when we get older is newer versions of school textbooks and stuff. But we got it from two thousand and seven, and why can't we get some from two thousand and thirteen?
Are you gonna be participating in the walkout next week?
Yes, I am, proudly.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not T G.
Okay, thank, thank you guys for coming out. Um, I see you guys are protesting. Um, can you tell me a little bit of why, why you're out here and what you're fighting for?
We're here to support the teachers and the students that we love, that we teach every day.
Okay, and what, what, sorry, what aspect of the students are you trying to protect? Like, better, like, tools to learn?
Yeah, just the resources that they need to learn and every day.
How do you feel about the, the demonization of a lot, demonization of a lot of the kids now? Like, kids are being arrested for jaywalking, and all, and fractures like that, little fights at the school. Now they have a prison record, and now, so when they finally do get a diploma, if they do get one, how they gonna get a job?
They can't go anywhere.
Do, I mean, do you guys like, is there any way your unions can fight for, like, better treatment of the students in that aspect?
We're both special education teachers. We fight for better treatment every day. You know, we do all kinds of stuff for the neediest of the needy children, and we love all the children that we teach.
So, since you're in, since you're in the special ed, how do you feel about the way some kids are forced to all day special ed, when all they need help with maybe is math? Or maybe science, or maybe reading, but then the state, because they're, they're getting money for that, because they're getting more money the longer they're in special ed, you both know that? How do you feel about that? Do you think they're, like, freezing the kids?
Well, we're, we're both very strong people as far as special ed is, they are called individual.
Okay.
Education plans for a reason.
Very good.
Every child is different. No, there are no two child, or no two adults for that matter, that are the same. And every child should be, uh, valued on each individual merits of that individual child.
Well said.
And, um, so some children should, as you said, be just with math. Other children require a lot more intensive.
Yes, ma'am.
Either for personal care or for academics, either way.
Okay.
So we, but we just believe strongly that it's individualized. You do not lump anybody together as a group.
Well said. Um, last thing, and I know, I know you guys are busy. You wanna get back to everything. What is your opinion about this whole Keystone exam? The new exam, the entrance exam that kids have to pass in order to get a diploma?
Um, to be honest with you, since we are, since I'm a special education.
Yes, ma'am.
I know of it more with my own child rather than here, because our kids take a different test.
Okay, ma'am.
They don't even take the P S S A. They take the, an alternate test, the P A S A, which is the one percent take, which our kids take.
Okay.
So I don't have very, I don't have, in Allentown at least, much experience with the Keystone.
Okay.
The only thing is, I know my own child, where I live, has to take it. She didn't have any problem with it, but it's, it's another test. What can you say?
Well said. It was nice meeting you guys. Can we give a big shout out to Mike Frisetteau and the kids? Let's say a big shout out to the kids for their effort.
Oh, we always shout out to the kids.
Oh, we shout out to the kids.
We love our students.
We love them. That's why we're here.
Alright, you got it.
That's why we're here, exactly.
Thank you for taking the time.
You're very welcome.
Let's go.
You gotta get, yo, you gotta get in lights, man. Oh, you're good, you're good, bro. Well, all the contacts are going on, right? Okay, that's, I'm on, okay. What contact you have? Alright, I agree.
Alright, don't bang on the windows. Your replacement's like twenty thousand.
Excuse me, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, your point is being made. We need you not to bang on the windows. They wanna say that you're hoodlums. They wanna say that you're acting up. We know that's not what it is. We made the noise to get the attention. See the attention?
Oh, yeah?
Don't bang on the windows. Overstanding this point, don't bang on the windows. But I believe we can say what we want, and we don't bang on the windows. Alright, you seen it. You can say what you want. Don't bang on the windows. Keep the profanity away. Be civilized in what you're doing. Be controlled. Show the rest of the world that you know what you're doing, and you're here for a peaceful demonstration.
Oh, yeah!
I still got, hold on, hold on, check, check, check. Hold on, wait, hey, hey. I still got food over there, and I ain't going home with food. Alright? Let's go get it. Alright? It's not over. It's not over.
It's not over. It's not over. It's not over. It's not over. It's not over. It's not over. It's not over.
Can you touch the people's phone now? Thank you. I'm clumsy. Um, I got it online. You can get it anywhere online. Um, Amazon? Amazon has, they have them.
Mary Ellen!
Officer speaking.
So what did you say, man? What did you say?
I just let them know that there's a disconnect in the city.
Okay.
I mean, they, they haven't cared about the community. They haven't cared about the kids for the last thirty years. And there's a reason why there's a disconnect. The reason why there's a disconnect is because you got the leadership in there that doesn't even listen to the community, that, that desires change. Obviously, everybody here wants change. This is the fifth worst school district in Pennsylvania out of five hundred and one school districts. That's a problem.
Yes, sir.
And for the last five years, the community has been trying to follow the rules, Section two twenty, to, to write your congressman, to write the board members, and that shit doesn't work. So you have to, you have to assemble, you have to use and exercise your First Amendment right to peaceably assemble. That's how you make noise. Did we make noise tonight? Now, remember, guys, this is peaceful, alright? The only way to make change happen is if you remain peaceful. Because if you get violent, the community, the leaders, the ones who sit inside, are gonna look at you and be like, "There it goes again."
Amen.
The black and brown kids in this community are causing a problem again. That's what they think about it. They think that's all you do, is cause problems in this community. And here we go, letting them know that we want improvement for our lives.
Oh, yeah!
Guys, you guys ready one more time? Put your right hand up in a fist. Alright? Put your right hand up in a fist. And say and feel these powerful words. "We have nothing to lose."
We have nothing to lose.
"But our chains."
But our chains.
"We walk together."
We walk together.
"As brothers and sisters."
As brothers and sisters.
Oh, man, that sounds powerful. That sounds powerful. You lead, you lead. One more time, lead it. Here, go ahead. You guys ready?
We stand together.
Ready? Here we go, ready? "We have nothing to lose."
We have nothing to lose.
"But our chains."
But our chains.
"We walk together."
We walk together.
"As brothers and sisters."
As brothers and sisters.
Now, right now, let's march down to the Martin Luther King statue. That's where this is gonna happen. Let's go.
Mike?
Hi. This way, guys, this way.
You coming out tomorrow? Were you the one asking if I wanted to do the radio station with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Dude, I get calls every day. I put my mind on playing.
Yeah, I'm here, bro. I'm, I'm, I still got your job. I still play. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you coming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our camera stopped this, this very violence, because the cops are like...
Wait, what? I thought, I thought, thank you.
No, I'm saying, our camera, you see?
Oh, oh, okay.
The camera's presence, it stopped that.
Stay with me, Jossel. Stay with me. I see him, yeah. He just pulled out, man, that's him.
Oh yeah! Yeah! You lit? Yeah! Oh shit! Where was Juju at?
Right here.
You wanna welcome me to our baby's seat, Jossel?
Baby's seat, me.
Guys, if anybody says they're afraid of the police, they're protecting them now.
Man, we don't got a cross, take your three dollar sign, what's up? What's up? Take your three dollar sign.
We're gonna do some burgers and shit tonight.
Burgers, we tipping over cars and...
Yeah, I mean...
Throwing rocks at houses. Shit! Mazel tov's. Now, that's some extreme. Oh, and we're going to Roberto. I think we about egg a school. I graduated from this piece of shit, man.
So you guys united way, or...
United youth?
United youth, okay.
Huh?
United youth?
Yeah.
Okay. This is gonna be a great video of having Michael funny as he laughs.
That's your boy! I'm the doctor too! Yo, we gonna bring you to the walkout on Monday, you gonna bring some noodles.
Barboza?
Oh, look at that traffic, we stopped it. The red cloud, bitch. The red cloud, we stopped the traffic.
Yo, watch yourself, little man. Get on the inside so you won't get hit.
Do you even know Mike the Chanting?
He will in like five, he will in five years.
We are the future! 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 We are the future!
Always wanted to cover marching, okay. I went to the object, I washed you, I missed all the marching.
And there's not even that many of them.
Man, we stopping traffic, we popping.
You good, bro, you good? They actually escorted us. They were behind us the whole time.
They're coming for education!
Robin?
They actually escorted us, the guy in the white car. They were behind us the whole time. To make sure we alright.
Oh, he's with us, though.
Yeah, 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 I was talking to him earlier.
But she going home now, but... Oh, she not? Oh, okay. Okay. Bless us up, we're popping.
Woo! We here! Now, you guys, be careful, don't be touching the statue, come on, respect Martin.
Well, he kinda crusty right now.
Let's get out there, get out there.
Yo, his girl looking cute, though.
And I'ma feel it tomorrow.
Alright.
There's a reason. There's a reason why this is the chosen grounds to meet at during the walkouts. If you guys know the history about Martin Luther King Jr., this is what he fought for his entire life. Peaceful protests make change in communities. Can the people, can the people be part of the solution instead of what they think people being part of the problems? We have something to prove next week during the walkouts. We have something to prove. They are looking at you and going, "You guys can't do it." You guys can't do that. They were listening...
But we can!
That's right.
That's right!
They were listening to all that noise, but still, in the back of their minds, they're like, "This ain't gonna work," they still can't do this. We have something to prove to them next week. We have something to prove to them on Sunday. Again, Sunday, guys, let them know this. Sunday at twelve PM, twelve PM, Sunday at Eleventh and Hamilton. Dr. Umar Johnson is coming down to support this as well. Dr. Umar Johnson is a national speaker about kids getting involved in their community to try to make change in their life, to make, try to make change in their education.
He was just interviewed on The Breakfast Club, too. He was just interviewed on The Breakfast Club.
Now, guys, everybody here, you guys had courage, and that's what it takes. You guys had courage to come here when everybody said, "You won't, you won't graduate if you come here." That you would be arrested if you came here. And you had the courage to exercise your First Amendment right to peacefully assemble, and that's what you did. On Monday, guys, we need you to have the courage again. Wear your officer badges. Wear them. Go into the schools and say, "Nothing's gonna happen to you."
Roll up here, let's go.
We just... We just got the Assistant Chief of Allentown to just state that they are not going to arrest you unless you guys get violent. And that's why it's so important to say, "Stay peaceful."
Yeah.
Alright? Together we march together, okay? Peacefully. And we march here from Deere, and we march here from Allen, and we march from, well, Roberto Clemente's right there, but...
We still march.
Harrison Moore, no, Harrison Moore.
Harrison Moore, if the middle schools wanna do it soon. And we're gonna, we're gonna be marching with you on Monday, we'll be marching with you on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, until they listen to your voice.
Right.
Cause right now, they don't listen to your voice.
Let's go!
There we go, Jossel.
You let everybody in your school know, all the students in your school that thought that this is a stupid idea, that thought that this isn't gonna work, you let every student in your school, you let every one of your parents, you let the adults in the community know.
We don't care what they say!
You let them know that we want your support.
There we go, we got a parent.
That's right. Oh, hi, parents. Guys, one last thing.
Hi, mom!
You guys understand, one last thing. You guys understand the power of unity? Like tonight, we showed, did you feel the power?
Yeah!
Now, we need other people to be united with us. We are stronger together. So there are two other people, two other groups of people that we need for you guys to get. Yes, do we get the students? Yes, will you get the other students? Yes, but we have two other groups of people. Number one is the parents. We need the parents to come out here and support you. If you guys are taking the stand to try to make your education and life and future better, they should support you. Parents should support the students here seven AM on Monday, the whole week. And the other group, the second group, is the teachers. When you go into school tomorrow, go into your classes and say, "We supported you, can you support us?"
Yeah!
Guys, see all this? You guys are the, you guys are by far the most powerful group this city has ever seen. You guys got the social media, you guys got the cameras. That's the real media right now. It's not sixty-nine news in the morning call. You guys run the media. You guys run the city. So exercise that power from now until the end, until we accomplish what we came here to accomplish.
Woo!
Alright, guys, guys, just to let you know, uh, there's a reason why this city took this statue here. This, this statue was put here six years ago to inspire young people to stand up for what they really believe in, to have a voice. There's a reason why they put it here. And now, we're exercising that reason next week. We're exercising that right now.
You know you got scared. That's okay.
Alright, guys, yo, uh, just to let you guys know, uh, remember, Sunday, twelve o'clock, Eleventh and Hamilton, uh, we're gonna be there eleven, uh, 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 Eleventh and Hamilton, we're gonna be there from twelve to four. And then, if you guys want to, we're gonna have transportation over to Cootstown University, because now the Cootstown University, Cootstown University wants to join in on you guys. So now, we're, so now, we're gonna be uniting not only the high school students, but the colleges around this area are gonna be united with you too. Oh, this is gonna be something strong that's gonna last forever. You guys give yourself a round of applause. Alright, guys, uh, now we gotta march back to the...
Getting dimmed, man. Here, just running over. Yeah, I wanted to do some more work with you guys, though.
Uh, I gotta give it, oh, thanks, man.
So you actually gonna do a report on this? It seems for travel. You work for the morning call, right?
I do.
Okay, cool, cool.
I'm the city reporter. Our school is inside.
Okay. So what do you think about them changing the rules and not letting people in without an ID? Was that always like that?
Uh, into the school district, though.
Yeah, in the meeting.
It's a public community.
That's what, that's what they said to the, that's what they said to the kids.
They have, they have a fire code, they can...
There's one thing we have to prove to them!
They think that we're unorganized and we have to show them that we are organized.
They think we're unorganized and we have to show them that we're organized!
Guys, right now, when it comes to marching, yo, when it comes to marching on Monday and Tuesday and the whole week next week, we have to do it in an orderly fashion.
We have to do it in an orderly fashion.
Guys, you guys, you guys are the officers of this movement. We have to practice it now. We have to. Guys, right now, guys, right now, we need two lines, shoulder to shoulder, two lines, straight lines.
Back to that partner, come on. Who's gonna, who's gonna be the...
Me, both of them.
No, wait, you and you.
But let's say you're touching me.
You're the leader.
Fine, you're touching me. Y'all gonna be at the end?
We cool like...
I'll be at the end.
Y'all, y'all got a whole hand?
Guys, guys, the leaders!
Guys, please pay attention, it's not gonna work if you don't pay attention.
Guys, the leaders are persuaded, the leaders are faced. Their hands are up, please follow them, single file line, two, two by two, shoulder by shoulder, together, guys. We have to show that we are disciplined in this, okay? We have to show that, guys. Alright, guys, you guys ready?
Yeah!
We got this!
Here we go.
Yeah!
You got this.
Yeah!
Okay? And I was marching at oh-seven twenty, man.
I learned my about face. Tell everybody to stay behind us.
We gotta march like this, like, they were like, they were like, straight like that.
I go through there. Oh, wait, you got my cute self up in there? Oh my God, that's what we had to say!
Oh, we men?
I walk over here, I gotta walk back over there.
That's your mom?
Yeah.
She's a normal woman.
What's your first and last name?
Bobby Victor.
Huh? There you go. There you go. How many can I grab? How many?
Take them all.
Can I send those five?
Oh, I got more, I got more.
Hold on, hold on, I'm gonna...
Just take them, so we can hang them out in school.
Nah, well, I got more.
Look, oh, wait, so then we... We'll take this one.
Oh, zero.
Don't take all of it.
I'm not, I'm not taking all of it, I'm not taking...
The march was good.
Are you glad you came out? Are you glad you came out today?
Yes.
Okay. What was your, what was your main thing you were fighting for?
We were, uh, I want Burnham in school. Alright, music, we don't have that.
Oh, okay. You want, you want more of the electives?
Yes.
Okay, cool. How long has that been gone? Like, how long do they take it out of schools? That you know?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay.
And I'm from Roberto Clemente.
The charter school, nice, okay. They don't have it either?
No.
Oh, man. Thank you, mom.
It still looks like you. Yes, yes, M3.
It wasn't till you all stuck in the... No, no, seriously. Oh my God. Why, can they put the camera on you?
No, no, no.
Alright, we've got protest video, we can be here now.
You hit me? You hit me?
I have them coming into council chambers.
Come here. Everybody here. You gonna interview anybody? Oh, you did, okay.
Oh, she, uh, she went over there, where is she?
Osway's, uh, what's her name? Marielle's, Marielle's. Marielle's! Marielle!
Marielle's, Rita Morales.
Jesus, they...
Morales!
Julie!
Yo, RT!
Chill, bro, I know your mom... Yo, we need, we need the, we need the fabric for this, everybody needs one.
I got one.
No, there's people that don't, everybody needs one.
I have a good one.
I don't.
Now, then you need another one. Then you need another, and we're gonna have it all week, all, all week, all night.
Yeah, I know. I have to like tie more.
We need it longer, we need it longer.
Can I get your name real fast, sir?
Yes, sir, who are you?
I'm with the morning call.
What's your name?
My name's Harry Fisher.
Harry Fisher?
I'm working with...
Mike Frisette.
Nice to meet you, Mike. How do you spell your last name?
Uh, F-R-A.
F-R-A.
S-E.
S-E, you're like D?
No, no. Frisette. Mike Frisette, F-R-A.
F-R-A.
S-S-E.
S-S-E.
T-T-O.
T-T-O. University of Allentown?
Uh, born and raised here, I just moved out to Brown. Born and raised.
What is your role in tonight?
Born and raised here in...
What is your role in this group tonight?
Educator in Allentown the last six years.
You're a teacher?
I am a teacher.
In this group, I'm a stewardess.
Yes, I work right now, I am currently, uh, working with the Medical Academy Charts.
Medical Academy Charts.
I, I worked for five years at Roberto Clemente.
And did you help a world?
Besides, uh, I, I was one of the many organizers.
Let's go, man. Don't you know, okay, good. Let me just get some shots of you, okay? Cause I guess Emily's gonna be quoting in the story. It's okay?
You need this one.
You said, you said quoting in the story.
Look, I guess Emily talked to our reporter, I'm just getting some pictures of you. You don't need to pose for me, I'm just trying to get some shots of you.
Bro, can we all take picture with him?
You got, I, I mean, I'm not taking a posed shot, I'm trying to just get some shots of you guys out.
Alright, you ready?
I'm not getting posed shots, so just...
I'm gonna smile because there's no way he's gonna put like a mugshot on it, and so I'm gonna be smiling. I'm gonna be smiling until this guy gets out of here. So I'm gonna be smiling like this. My, you better keep taking pictures, my man.
You know what you need, bathroom?
I know, yeah, yeah, I know, my things are chapped and everything.
No, for you, sir.
Oh, for...
You see, now you're really smiling.
Yeah, that is real.
That, that keeps you smiling. That's legal, you put that...
He took a picture, I better be...
I just got a haircut, so I'm good.
I got some shots of you guys out here.
Alright, I appreciate it. That.
They don't care. They not... What?
Thank you.
Really? Percy, why you gonna take it while we have it going?
Finally pull a face for these people.